Yeah, I think they did an assessment and found that.
They didn't know, they didn't realize it was that.
Yeah, all the platter lots they had and everything they approved, like, oh, we're working past you.
Till for a year they put that on, I think.
Yeah, what's that fix estimate, like 300 million for the sewer plant or something?
Wow.
I guess the orchard, all of that can continue to build out because they've got that accounted for, but nothing else to come.
Right, yeah, I think it's basically what they've built plus what's platted, but yeah, they're not gonna subdivide anything else.
Whoops.
It's a way to control growth.
Well, but hopefully you would have known that, just kind of caught you.
It's always weird, how did they not know? It sounded like one of your main sewer lines was having some issues and that's what prompted them to look at you. I think it's some really old sewer infrastructure that needs to be replaced.
Do they have their own treatment facility? Do they use somebody else?
The question that I had is, yeah, there is regional treatment in that area, but I don't think that they're on that.
Is an ars reach capacity at 60,000?
I think it's 60,000.
That's about halfway there. Yeah, I think actually right now according to Dennis, we're at about 60% capacity. The state requires you to start planning at 70% and then to be under construction at 80%.
Well, this is no joking matter, yeah.
No joking matter.
I think we're within about five years of really getting something done.
Because they use our system too, yeah. Does that mean according to their deal, they have to fund a new... It'd be cheaper for them to help us out than it would be for them to... Is it a percentage? Whatever percentage they're contributing to the capacity is.
I have their appointment now, probably put it on the system. They're putting it on the system.
The mill agree will go either way. Who are they, who's their 5% miller?
Great to see you.
Hi, Barry.
Nice to see you.
I just back in, I grew up in from council bus this morning.
Hey, Andrew Wulff, nice to meet you. Yeah, Andrew.
So, there's been a lot of water news lately up here, so I thought I would... Well, first off, you've seen this commercial structure before. This is the definitive agreement ultimately between a metro district that may hold the asset and then you're entitled to be to water authority to purchase it. What we're shooting for over the next 60 days is the LOI, which would basically be the precursor to that. It's somewhere between the term sheet and this. And we'll talk about the team we put together to start advancing the project in a way that gets us better cost estimates. The law firm will be using to draft the LOI first, and in this agreement, they've done these before, and it's... This is an important agreement. It's the thing we were talking about, Shane, where things like what condition will this asset be in in 25 years? And specifying the exact requirements for the asset, when it's turned over, and everything else. I mean, what you don't want, of course, is there to be something happen, like a piece of equipment fails and everybody's pointing fingers at each other in terms of... It's, you gotta replace that, you just don't want that happening, so this will cover all of that. But getting back to the water news, the pipeline, I mean, you guys have been reading in the paper. And this, this particular project, it's water that Kodak acquired back in 1968. And since then has not been used for ag except for we grow some corn on the industrial park right now just so we can do the beneficial use part of preserving our water right. So, there's no buy and drive with this. There's no disruptive major infrastructure with this project, it's all gonna happen on the industrial park except for the tie-ins. There's no de-watering upstream of urban centers. And finally, a major component of the state water plan is to realize reuse of water. And with particular water, because we're situated the way we are, close to you, and we can pull it out and put it back in the river through the wastewater treatment plant that you guys have, we'll be able to reuse 71% of this water, we talked about this in June, but it's an important number because it takes our raw water from 1629 to about 2,800 acre feet. And potable water delivered from about 1200 to 1300 acre feet up to 2,300. So, we're told, we'll have to go to a water court to have an approval of our augmentation plan to realize that, but basically they're just trying to make sure you're not drying up part of the river, and we'll be able to easily show that. Okay, so two more slides for me and then Greg has a few things to say. Question, yeah?
Should I just go back in terms of the volumes that you were interested because of the augmentation?
Yes, because the...
The reuse.
The reuse, yeah, there's two things, two pieces to it. One is, does your water right allow for reuse? And a lot of water rights don't allow for reuse, but this is senior water rights and it does allow for reuse. So, A, can you do it legally, and B, can you do it physically, technically? And the trick there is, you don't want to allow a stretch, you don't want to pull the water out up here and then a mile down river or whatever, put it back in. Because there's a stretch of river that's dried up. So, I leave this to the water resource engineers and the lawyers to figure that out exactly, but what they're telling me is because of the proximity in particular of where we'll be withdrawing the water, which is at our industrial park, and putting it back in after it goes through the Windsor system, which is from your wastewater treatment plant, which is in the industrial park, you basically are able to satisfy those physical requirements for the reuse. And we had the water resource engineer do the calculations, assuming certain losses in the system, et cetera, et cetera. But based on those assumptions, he was coming up with 71.4% reuse. It'll be different when we do it in real time, but that's why I'm using that number.
And what did you say the plant output was, I think you said, in terms of acre feet?
Well, the, the water that we have, the Whitney ditch water rights that we have, is 1,629 acre feet available for this project.
With the reuse?
With the reuse that takes it up to, and that's raw, with the reuse that takes it up to, I think, 2,830. It's just over 2,800 acre feet effectively. But you tend to sort of make the calculation in terms of your use of it, and you have to account for the system losses. So, backing that up, the, once we account for losses in the original 1,629, we've got 1,200 and some odd acre feet of potable water that will be delivered. But when you have the reuse component, you've got 2,300 plus acre feet of potable water.
But you'll have to do a change of use case in order to get the reuse.
It's the augmentation, I think, I think we're okay with the change of use.
It's not change of use, it's just an augmentation.
Augmentation plan.
Okay.
You have to, you do have to go back to water court, but it's not a change of use, it's a simpler process.
Yeah, you have to show on the...
It's really just proving out what that percentage is.
Yeah.
Based on your actual location. Where you're actually putting the water back in. So, two other quick slides, one of them to talk about the team that we put together, the...
Can you go full screen with that, or can you...
Full screen, oh yeah, sorry. You can't see the 12.5?
Figure for the benefit of everybody, that might be better.
Okay, so since we last met, as I mentioned, the project delivery agreement, we're going with Kutech Rock, who have done these sorts of agreements a lot in the past. Have any worked with Kutech in the past?
Yeah.
They've got good bond counsel practice as well, pretty well known, yeah. I think the important thing here is we've got national expert firms, but they're all regional too, so they're all tied into Northern Colorado. We wanted to make sure we have people who really understand the issues that you face. Yeah, all these people work in Northern Colorado and have done, done projects and deals. Exactly. Piper Jaffray out of their Denver office, project financial advisor. Jonathan Hira is going to be the banker working with us again as an FA. We'll, through them procure the underwriter later because we want to get the best deal on the underwriter. And we don't need that underwriting yet, but we'll be working with Dean and with Piper and whoever else Dean wants to bring to the table. And firms like Citibank, DA Davidson, Stiefel, and a number of others have expressed significant interest in doing it and have, you know, we've talked to them generally about how it would look and what kind of type of bonds would be available, and they, they all have a lot of interest in water type financing. Yeah, to serve as the underwriter, yes. In an investment rated or non-rated basis. Then we're hiring a project manager, the firm is called Dtesco. Dennis, have you run into Keith before?
No, I don't think so.
They're based in Fort Collins, they've worked on a lot of projects here in Northern Colorado, water projects in particular. A number of the contractors, and we're working, talking to several contractors again in Northern Colorado, but several of them knew Keith and have worked with him in the past and thought highly of him. So, it's about a 12-person firm in Fort Collins, and again, they'll be doing the project management, not actually the project execution. So, they'll be supporting us in that. And their job is to go out and really work with the design-build contractors to get kind of the best price and format for the deal. I think they'll take it through the first one where we'll be able to get kind of the higher level price, and then they'll take it to the next stage, once you pick, once we pick that contractor to actually build it and name some of the contractor firms. Well, we talked to Enzel Phelps, Hydro Construction, Enzel Phelps, Mols, HDR, Mols, and Garni. And all of those have, you know, done water projects in Northern Colorado. And that's, as Greg was saying... It didn't, was it Hydro that did the plants that you guys went out and saw? They did the Sterling plant.
Sterling plant.
Yeah. They're up in Fort Collins, right at Mulberry and I-25. But Dtesco will put together an RFP for a contractor, put it on the street, and then they'll respond with their proposals, and in the process of that response, they'll be giving us more refined cost estimates. And it's always better, as you know, when you get it from the contractor as opposed to the architect or the engineer, as it may be, because the contractors are thinking about risk. So, we'll get that pricing, which will help inform the pricing that we're talking about in terms of what the water ultimately will cost. So, working on the financial structure and financing structure, working on the contract with the town that will ultimately be that design bid or design-build-deliver-operate contract that we're talking about financing. Bring in the project manager, I think I'm gonna finalize that one with Keith tomorrow. The others, what we've got in place and the final ones that haven't been put in place yet are because they'll be procured in stage three, which will be the stage after the LOI. And so, that's the team we've been working on putting together over the last six weeks, that's what we've been doing when you haven't seen us here, because we went through a lot of, a lot of folks to figure out exactly who to work with, and we think we're ready to go. And we're pulling the trigger on it now so that we should start producing paper for you guys to review. Models, designs, financial approaches, et cetera. In all cases, we went through a rigorous process to pick these ones, allocated budgets, approved the budgets, and they're all ready. We've approved the financing at this stage. Yeah, Pat signed it on Friday, so... So, let's see, I think other than that, you know, we've, we'll get that going. And it's sort of Econ 101, you know, the more demand that you've got for the product and the larger capacities you're pushing through, the less the per unit cost. So, there's been talk along the ways of, you know, will this project be supplying Windsor alone? Will it be supplying other communities in the region, et cetera, et cetera? We'll have to continue to have those conversations as we proceed. You guys know what you're thinking about, you know what your needs are, what, how you want to approach this, but, you know, that'll all come as we continue to advance the project along. Yeah, I think one of the things has been really reinforced as we've gone through the process with all the, you know, talking to three engineers, three legal firms, three financing firms and more, is there's a lot of demand along the front range up here for water, you guys all know that. But we're talking about specific projects where they're building 900 units, 1,000 units. So, you know, we think the idea both of serving Windsor and then in Windsor we can put it together and do a regional facility is gonna make a lot of sense. There's gonna be a lot of demand. Our, we just, the last two months, we've seen more and more of specific projects backing that up. Yeah. Makes us pretty excited about it. Yeah, I'm sure we'll all get there, but anything you want to add to this? No, I mean, look, I think from the Row Group's perspective, we're excited about this project. We're, you know, looking at the land in the park that's gonna do it, we're setting it aside, we're making sure we get all the rights for storage bonds, identifying where this is all gonna go, because, you know, this project's gonna happen, in our opinion, one way or another. We're gonna get this done, and we really like Windsor and are very supportive of what's going on. We obviously have a long-term and expect to have a very long-term relationship with the park. So, we're, we're really looking forward to seeing something, hopefully, we can get done by the end of the year to move on to the next stage. Pat, Pat particularly wanted me to hand this out to you so that you get a sense. Sometimes Row and in this community, you may think of us only as the people who own GWIP, but Pat has built an organization that, just to show you, give you an idea that we can do a project like this. It's now a multi-billion dollar business, just so you get a little sense of who we are. He founded it in '72, we have 1,000-plus employees. Our total asset value at this point is north of $5 billion. As you know, we're headquartered down in Denver, but we're really spread across the US and Canada. Infrastructure is kind of our bread and bones, we have real estate. You know, if you're down in Denver, we just finished a $250 million, 32-story tower, two-tower building with 500 multifamily units in it. It's really right off Wash Park, it's world-class. We own a few more multifamilies in Denver. You know the rail through Albi tracks, both here in the Great Western Railroad, but then we own 23 different railroads across the United States. Well, with a capital budget of, you know, close to 75 million a year. We are the largest private owner in the DJ, Great Western Petroleum is, we have about 60,000 acres that we developed throughout. Mostly, we're actually more southern than here, most of our acres, but we do have some, we drill in, in Great Western Industrial Park. And then we have the infrastructure group that Rick's doing, and then we also do healthcare technology. So, you can just see the symmetry of the holdings, I kind of hit all of those towers there that we just built there on the page or under Real Estate, which is really been a great project for us. And then, you know, the experience we say builds trust, if you look at who we've partnered with in the past, Tia's a big partner of ours in the Great Western Petroleum Company CPP Investment Board. So, we, we understand the financings and can bring that to bear pretty quickly. I won't take any more of your time or pitch with the commercial. Well, I think that the point there was that, like Greg said, sometimes people just know it's for that and for pointing in the right direction. And there's a lot more to it, of course. We allocated about 300 to 500 million dollars a year, so this is what we do, we're real experienced at it, all you need to know. Any questions?
Yeah, I appreciate the update, and obviously as this moves forward, I think we as a board are really gonna have to start making hard decisions. And it's really a source of water, and what's hiding in here is, at the end of the day, I appreciate, you gave us some cost estimates a while back acknowledging, and we all acknowledge it's the top sport at the broad, yeah. Related to the all-in costs of the project and booty financing, assuming a 20-year bond, I don't even know whether it'd be 20 or 30 or what. But you can kind of work back to a cost per gallon, if you will, if you're at 2,300 acre feet of output. And then layer an O and M, and I don't know if you have any, any idea what that would be.
We did some initial things, that's what this phase is to do. We are gonna nail the cost, we got Piper Jaffray, so you're not even gonna have to just listen to us, come in and tell us exactly what we think the all-in financing cost of this is gonna be. So, we will, that's really over the next 30 to 60 days, we have to get that number nailed for you.
O and M as well, right?
O and M as well. Yeah, with the OpEx estimates we've been using came from our early engineer HDR, but those were rules of thumb. But it's pretty experienced rules of thumb because as you saw, you saw the plant. And we're, those plants you saw were about 10 million gallon per day plants capacity. We're gonna start with 3 million gallon per day capacity, but make it scalable to 10 or more. We've got the ability to do that. But we were using OpEx estimates, they're probably pretty good.
So, are you gonna need or expect the LOI before we get to this point? Or we're gonna, in the next 30 to 60 days, you're gonna deliver some other deliverables? And after we see that, then we would move into the next stage of an LOI?
Yeah, you've gotta start seeing real numbers from real generators. And it's sort of, you know, just move it along incrementally because you want to make sure that we're all together. You know, obviously, everybody needs to see these outcomes before... Dtesco will help us refine the design, get bids from multiple contractors, so we can all look at, here's what it looks like. And then Piper Jaffray will help us put that into the model and say, here's what the interest rate's gonna look like. Here's where we think we can, we can do it, here's what the equity component that we contribute will be. And, and I think we'll have it all there for you in something that's ready to sign, not just talk. It'll give you a range from our perspective.
Now, is the 2,300 feet, acre feet, the max you can get out of there, or is that what you're gonna give us? Is there more available than that?
That's the max you can get out of the available water rights that we have right now today. The 1,629 acre feet of Whitney ditch water. But, good question, because if we go out and acquire additional water rights, you can run that through the plant. You just have to be able to make sure that you can augment, you know, based on where you're getting the rights, you can augment in the river in an appropriate place. But that's why we could take it, the 3 million gallon per day plant would max out with that 1,629 acre feet that we're talking about. So, really, that, a 10-minute NGD plant would have, you know, approximately three times that amount of water going through it.
Because if we double the population, you know, we're 30,000 now, if we go to 16, we're gonna need more than that. We're gonna need more than a 16 or 23 or whatever it turns out to be, so...
And our intent is to, because, you know, we'll get bids on what it just looks like here, or what it would look like to be able to expand it. But our idea's always been to be able to expand it. Well beyond the three. And, you know, you've got, there's, there's a lot of water projects, and you guys know better than I, that are being planned. And water will be moving up and down, and if we've got a plant, you know, there that can process it, that's gonna be an option. And to the extent we're able to get water that is of a, it's cleaner, basically, so it came from further up river, through any project to dilute with the water we're pulling out of the ground. We could even opt for conventional treatment, or more conventional treatment than ROs that we have to use because we're pulling water out where we're pulling it out. But you can always blend it with better water. I think the four things we were trying to do is to match what you asked for, Mary, which is give the town control, have it be cost comparable, have the water be sufficient quality. What was the fourth thing? I had the fourth one and I just lost it if I went. But we're still trying to meet those ten, so that you guys can control your water destiny. Cost is comparable to whatever, and maybe even better than what you can get elsewhere. And the water quality you guys can get is scalable. So, I think we, you know, we've had a lot of really good meetings, and we're trying to listen to exactly what you want. And, you know, we just look at it as a project that because it's got the storage ponds, it's got the land, the water, it's in the right location, I think, for Windsor and for the region, to be honest with you. It just feels like a project that, in my mind, has to get done, so we're, all we're focused on.
So, talking about water quality, we had a citizen who emailed us a couple of weeks ago who said something about water on your site had been contaminated, or there was some contaminated water. To my knowledge, all the years that I knew, even when Kodak was there, I never heard of that. So, does that ring any bells?
I think we would know about that. We could check with Craig and the team that sits out there, but I've never heard of it.
I never heard it either, sorry.
Yeah, they're, you know, we'll check with them. We haven't heard anything major, I mean, we would know if there were environmental liabilities, because it's our site.
Right.
If there were known environmental liabilities. But it could have been a story where Kodak spilled something somewhere 30 years ago, but I don't know.
Well, they were alluding that that was more to oil and gas related, so, but I was like, nothing to my knowledge. I don't think, can't live without anything like that, so...
The two things that had emailed to me, one was, somebody did send me an article, it was a very old Kodak spill. It didn't really say what was spilled or how much, it was hard to go anywhere with it. Another would be the concerns of when we had the fire in December out there, the extraction. Was that extraction that had the, and they did all the foam, there's a lot of foam and stuff used, and people are asking, would that seep in? But I assume when we toured some water plants, the discussions, anything we do, we're gonna have to do water samples at some point to check the quality of the water, to decide if it's treatable, how to treat it, things like that.
That's exactly right, Barry, and we'll, we'll be drilling test wells where we're gonna be putting the infiltration gallery and testing that water for sure before we, and running a pilot plan, actually. Because you have to do, if we end up with RO, which is where we're headed right now, you have to do that in order for the vendor to understand how it's performing and what the quality of the product is coming out, because they're gonna have to guarantee it, and so that will all be happening probably right after the LOI, is when we'll start moving to that stage three with that kind of activity.
So, you'll be coming back to us in our, at our next meeting, like this in September?
The pace for us should be picking up now. We really, took us a little bit of time to secure the right people, the right experts that we think can help and give everyone comfort. So, now the pace should pick up, they're all fully engaged. He's gotta finalize the deal with Dtesco, but that should start working overdrive right now for us. So, yeah, September, October.
Okay, okay, great, well, I know we've got a couple of other items, but I want to thank you for your time and for bringing us the update. I appreciate it. So, we will dive in to and begin the official town board work session for August 13, 2018. So, with, who's gonna lead off the next item? Is that gonna be you, Scott, or... Is that gonna be you, Scott, or, or Ellen?
The general commercial lead down.
We're gonna, yeah, code update, general commercial service and storage areas.
Good evening. Um, so I know this tape before you, back in June fourth, um, and you had some comments, et cetera, about it. So just to, uh, I guess, remind you, um, the code does not currently address outdoor storage or display areas. And, um, Carolyn actually made this visual to just show examples of what outdoor storage we're really talking about. So, you know, when you go behind King Supers, Home Depot, et cetera, usually there's equipment, boxes, pallets, et cetera, all that is stored somewhere behind to the rear or side of the facility. Um, another big one is merchandise inventory. So places like Home Depot, um, even larger ones, they have inventory that's usually outside and screened. So basically, what we did is we went around, um, looked at some of the surrounding communities codes, La La Ma, Levelin', um, Fort Collins, and just kinda looked at the wording they had in their code regarding language and screening, et cetera. So that's what we used to come up with what you, what I will show you in a second. So, basically, from all that, um, we also looked at, um, examples of existing stores, either Fort Collins, surrounding communities, et cetera, and actually calculated the square footage of the business and then the square footage of the storage areas that they had to kinda see what people actually need. Um, so it wasn't just arbitrary numbers pulled out of nowhere. So these are the numbers we came out of, and other communities have these numbers as well, and those are pretty similar. So retail over a hundred thousand, gross leasing area, um, so that's a really big store. That's, um, Menards, you, those are large, very large retail. So that would be thirty-five percent O and Y area, retail over fifty thousand, which is pretty much King Supers, Safeway. That's fifteen percent of gross leasing area, and then retail over five thousand, which would be a lot of the, um, smaller stores around town, would be five percent of gross leasing area. So that would be square footage in the building. And, you know, with the retail over five thousand, there's already some businesses that, um, have outdoor storage like Ace Hardware, some of those people in town, yes.
Just for the, uninitiated, the gross leasing area in the building?
Yes.
Not, not the lot?
Square footage.
Not the whole lot?
No, not the whole lot, square footage of the building.
Does it matter what type of business? For instance, you used the example of, of a supermarket. It seems like a lot of their storage is inside.
A lot of it is. Um, for example, King Supers, though, they do have, in the back area, they will have pallets. Um, once that company has dropped off, they will have some temporary storage outside in the rear. Um, so that's what would be, um, covered. And the actual language, um, I'll just read it to you. "As accessory outdoor storage is permitted based on the size of the use as categorized in this figure. Outdoor storage should be used for storage materials or equipment used in the course of business, including inventory for storage or sale, overstocked with bulk items, but does not refer to the outdoor display of merchandise visible from public view. Storage areas shall be located in the rear side, as was shown in that previous, of the building and shall be permanently screened from adjacent property lines and right away by a wall or other screening. Screening materials, colors, and design shall match or complement the architectural elements of the principal building and then the following amount of outdoor storage." So you may have heard in there a reference to the outdoor display and seasonal sales. So we addressed that as well. And once again, this was all kind of looking at other codes and just seeing the needs that we have around. So King Su- yeah.
Oh, go ahead, go finish, thanks.
Um, King Supers, as you know, usually does Christmas tree sales on the parking lot, so we tried to address that as well. And that was with the second portion.
So what are these requirements in Greeley, Fort Collins, and Levelm? Because I don't think anywhere in the packet it actually said what they are in other commu- in other bigger communities that have the big boxes.
It's almost, pretty much verbatim what we're showing. Uh, a lot of times, I mean, it's, it's essentially saying, it needs to be in the rear, it needs to be on the side, it needs to be screened from public view. That's what most of them say.
I'm talking about like the percentages of the maximum outdoor storage.
I, who do you, I can't remember.
I was just gonna say, I believe that the percentages that we're showing and proposing are a little more liberal than
Yes.
neighboring communities allow.
Yes.
We were specifically looking at some proposed, some potential home improvement centers and things like that, um, that may or may not come to town. We wanted to make sure that we were accommodating what those users have in real life at other sites around the front range. And so we did use numbers that are a little bit more liberal than what you'd see in Fort Collins or Greeley or Levelm.
So, one question in the end, I, I just pose this to, to anybody. You know, I don't know if there's wisdom in, in, like, how it's staggered up. I mean, I, I like the idea of just having a flat percentage, you know, whatever it is, you know, instead of us arbitrarily saying, well, if you're five thousand square feet, you get five percent. Fifty thousand, I mean, I think just pick a number, what, whatever the board's comfortable with, because it does scale. If you're five thousand square feet, you know, thirty-five percent of that is thirty-five percent. And so I, I think whatever that number needs to be, and that's really the board, and, and I think we're gonna, planning to see how that would look. But I suggest we just pick a number and it's just scalable across the board.
I, I feel better about that, too, but, but I'd also want some way, um, that there could be some flexibility. Maybe a hardware store like Ace maybe needs more outside storage because of the designability or location or whatever. Is, is there a way to build in some flexibility without sacrificing standard?
Right. So how do we split up between for sale and for storage? Right? I mean, it does, you're saying like things that are for sale versus things that are-
So this is only storage, it doesn't include items for sale?
Yes.
Just storage.
So the, the next, so then B four would be what's for sale, would be display of merchandise. And that is not necessarily restricted to a square footage. Um, the way it's written, it's actually just restricted to location and that it would need to be like a site plan in area. You can't take the parking spaces.
But does it have to have the screening? Because I see a problem if we're gonna have to have that display, like, King Supers has that group, like, greenhouse they bring in. They don't fence that when that comes in, nor are they gonna want to put a fence around that.
Those, those are for sale, but those aren't stories, right? Like you were talking about, those are for sale, that really doesn't apply to that.
But it's talking about display of merchandise, so is that separated out of here? Because that's, I don't know what it's out in.
Yes. It is separated up.
And in fact, just, I guess, from the storage perspective, um, when the use, a commercial industrial use comes down, in the past, if they've wanted a, it's, uh, a large outdoor storage area, we've directed those to, those types of uses are generally considered limited or heavy industrial. Um, this, the municipal code was amended maybe seven or eight years ago to expand the allow, allowable outdoor storage use in the limited industrial area to fifty percent. And so for, I guess, I think staff would probably wanna run some scenarios for you to show you what, say, thirty-five percent across the board might look like in our commercial corridors as opposed to our industrial parks? Because the outdoor storage use is, is normally associated with limited industrial or heavy industrial uses. And I guess we wanna make sure that our commercial corridors, commercial corridor plan adequately addresses the appearance of this outdoor storage, because, um, this is kind of a departure from what you see in the corridor today. And, uh, wouldn't wanna have an unintended consequence. So just running, uh, some scenarios, I think, would be a good idea.
I think it might be good, well, along with the scenarios, to have examples of what, like, what'd you say, light commercial or light?
Light industrial.
Light industrial. This is general commercial, which I think is the, the, the key point, is that this is for the general commercial aspect. Um, because if we're talking about this across the border, is it just for general commercial, for light commercial? Or, you know, light industrial? I mean, we start getting into a lot of different, uh, zoning types, you know, that we're talking about. I guess it's good to make sure, because of the development community, et cetera, that we don't have a issue with any existing businesses. And maybe to Ken's point about existing businesses like an Ace or something like that, based upon where we've been, are there exceptions to be grandfathered in to, you know, or an exception made? I'm, I'm using the grandfather term when you're talking about like an exception. So I don't know, I'm kinda throwing this out here as far as this.
Yeah, and one of the other things we need to look at, or if we're saying that they can use up to thirty-five percent of the site is outdoor storage, then how much of the parking lot is that, is that now throwing our parking ratios off? And things, just, we need to look at it from a, I think, from a holistic standpoint of what that really means.
Scott? This would be general commercial only, right? Because it's totally different, you, like, light industrial, you're gonna have equipment dealers, I assume, rental agencies and stuff like that. We're not having a very small building and a very large storage area. So we have to restrict this in general commercial, you couldn't make it across the board.
And of course, the limited industrial zoning district requires the, um, outdoor storage to be on, uh, gravel or road base, some sort of gravel surface, whereas commercial, we wouldn't allow that. And so we really need to look at what type of surface they're gonna be using the storage. You know, there's just a whole lot of things that I think, we're going in a new direction, and I'd hate to just, uh, we were looking at it to the, I think, at the June fourth work session, the Department of Board and Plan Commission, I think the idea was thrown out there that maybe those three categories, or the smaller retail uses might have a very limited need for outdoor storage, whereas the bigger uses, like a home improvement center, those are the ones that really need that. That's why staff went in this direction based on that June fourth work session. But if we wanna go to a flat number across the board, I think, probably looking at, at what that means.
Scott, I feel like I wanna jump back a little bit, and again, because maybe the new guy, but, you know, it says the code currently doesn't address. And the fact that we're now looking to address it suggests we must be having some problems. And I, but I don't know of them, I have, I-
Well, we have thirteen that are non-compliant right now, so that would be my question.
But there's no code, apparently.
Right, so what happens to those that are grandfathered in? They, I mean, are, are we gonna, they can, gonna continue as they are? Or we're gonna retro, have to go back to those folks?
So if there is no existing rule related to outdoor storage, no one's non-compliant, because there's nothing with which to apply.
I get what he's saying, we're, we're talking about studying policy.
Are we, are we creating a problem? No, we don't have a problem.
No, we do, because this was brought about because of a project that Mr. Lynn wants to accomplish that included outdoor storage that he was told it could not happen. So there has to, there's gotta be, there's something on the books that, so.
Well, and going off what Christie's saying, though, that, but the point was, is it was depi- based upon how the property was zoned.
Yeah.
As to whether it was what, general commercial zone, Scott, I don't, what, general commercial versus what, light industrial or something like that?
So, that's a-
Which is why I was feeding into that. She said exactly, I think, what prompted all of the debate on this months ago.
Yeah, that was a perfect segue. We just, we just received this email five o'clock today, so I wasn't able to share it with Devon or Paul. So Mr. Lynn's comments are, are, are new to staff, I guess. But, yeah, that's, they're correct. The, the use that Mr. Lynn is proposing, you'll be seeing it in quasi-judicial setting in the near future. So I hope, we can't talk about the details of that application. But in general terms, it's more of, uh, use that is akin to the limited industrial zone district. And that's why it was, uh, recommended that it go through a, either a PUD or rezoning or additional use grant application, um, rather than changing the code to, to allow for industrial type uses in our general commercial corridors. That's why we're, we're talking about it now.
But see, that's what prompted the issue specifically to what you're talking about, David, because he went around and saw all these other non-compliant and said, look at all these folks that aren't having to comply, yet now I'm going to be told I have to comply.
And with what didn't he comply, when there is nothing with, which, to, to which you need to comply? Unless I'm misunderstanding that first sentence, where it says the code does not address outdoor storage, which means there's no limit, there's no rule, there's no nothing. Now, I get where you'd say, ask him back, ask to be finished, ask to be screened, that makes perfect sense. But I'm not sure I care why, how big it is. Why is it?
In the site that Mr. Lynn was talking about that came up months ago, it is general commercial now?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I-
So technically, that would-
There is no-
There is no restriction.
What is in code now related to general commercial zoning?
The code is silent with regard to outdoor storage in the general commercial zone district. So it's not addressed-
And what? From being used in the same sense that a limited industrial would be?
We specifically identified outdoor storage as an accessory use in the limited industrial zone district or the heavy industrial zone district. We specifically did not include outdoor storage in the general commercial zone, because those are, that zone is pretty much Main Street, at twenty-five, all of our primary corridors. So outdoor storage is something that you really wanna be careful with, uh.
But yet we're forcing him to do a CUG. And, and only because, are, are you, are you saying that if he hadn't been compliant and just moved forward, he could have just maybe moved forward and because there's, there was no code, that could have come back on him?
No, he would have submitted a site plan for the proposed use, and staff would have redlined the drawing to say, outdoor storage is a limited industrial use, you're in the general commercial zone, we need to address the zoning.
Right. So technically, what you just said is general commercial does not permit outdoor storage.
Correct.
It's not listed and not addressed, or it's-
It's not, it's not.
As it goes back to what your zone does.
Because that business coming in wanted to have outdoor storage in a general commercial zone.
Right.
That's why we're saying, hey, we need to change the, the, that's why there needs to be the CUG, so that you can have outdoor storage in that zoning.
So are we going back? Are we creating policy to help a cer- to help someone or a developer or a, a new retailer? Kind of back to David's point, I mean, if we don't have a problem, why are we fixing this? Or changing this?
Well, and, and again, so to be clear, with, with-
You have thirteen non-compliant, and now you got this other person over here questioning what it means.
But that's a different zoning, he's trying to do it in a different zone, right?
He's in general commercial zone as well. I think he's proposing a new use, and staff has, is probably in rears involving up on some outdoor storage that technically isn't shown on some of those, some of those commercial uses don't show an outdoor storage area on their site plan. So technically, they would be non-compliant. Staff could follow up with them to say, hey, we need to clean up these areas. That's, staff isn't trying to write a code amendment to make all of those non-compliant businesses compliant, because in some cases, you know, the backside of Ace Hardware backs up to a residential neighborhood. I don't know that we really want to say, that's fine the way you got it, you know? I think we, that's why we're going the condition use grant route, or we also recommend a rezoning or something, so that we're not doing a code amendment to address one specific lady's problem.
But forgive me if I'm wrong, if I restate this, by us, if this was adopted, let's say as-is, that gives a policy, uh, the municipal code, for general commercial, which means then there wouldn't have to be the CUG to limited industrial.
For commercial.
This only applies to general commercial.
Which is what that land is currently zoned as, is what I'm saying. So by, if this was adopted, let's say as-is or with some percentage for- So, by, if this was adopted, let's say as is, or with some percentage for scalability, like Shane said, technically, this would allow a developer such as Mr. Lynn to be able to bring a outdoor storage, uh, business into a general commercial, already zoned general commercial.
If it meant the percentages and the screening.
If it meant the percentages and everything else, so, yeah. So I, my, my point is, is technically using this one developer as an example, this could actually help. I don't know if the percentages are what they were desiring or anything like that, but I.
Well, and that's where the, the lady mail does recommend fifty percent, which is the number that's in our limited industrial zone.
That's why you were saying it had to be limited industrial, because it was fifty percent that was being requested.
Can't say.
I, I don't wanna talk.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
Particular pending.
But, but that's why I think Shane has to see, whatever that percentage is, you just see it straight across. And if it was five percent, it would be fifty at a hundred thousand, or it would be five.
No, it, it would just be the percentage straight across, so, so whatever the percentage, and I think that Scott's right, I think it would be good, instead of just adopting a, a percentage, I think it'd be better to have staff go and actually show you what that could look like in the real world. Cause you know, percentages, what do they mean? I, I think it's a lot better when it's real life, see it on a flat, see it on a site plan, and, and the board would have, like, oh, okay, that's what we meant. Versus driving down Main Street, you'd be like, wait, what did we approve? What was that?
Well, and that's why I mentioned that, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to murk the waters or go across, I'm just trying to have a understanding of why we're at where we're at and why we're even.
Well, I've seen about consequences too, I mean, you mentioned, uh, like, uh, Safeway, Ace Hardware, they back up to residential, so I mean, if it was fifty percent outdoor storage, what impact does that have on, you know, just on a number, what impact does that have on our residential? So, yeah, we do need to look at some examples and say, okay.
Yeah, we'd be going from zero now to thirty-five percent of the lot. So that's a big change in the way we've done things historically.
And just to tie in with what Scott is saying, if we go back to that last slide, I think the difference is in terminology. Outdoor storage being more of what you'd see on an industrial site, and these areas here where we're saying typical commercial outdoor storage, right now, we don't consider it outdoor storage, it's accessory to the use. So you may have your trash bins, recycle bin, equipment, right now, it's not considered outdoor storage, it's something that's accessory to that use. And so we would be changing that term.
Meaning obviously the pallets come and go, the, you know, boxes aren't always gonna be there, it's just for a time until a truck picks them up or until. But when we're talking about merchandise inventory, now that could be something that could be there on a, on a different timeframe.
But I think we need to see examples, because I also don't want to be creating code that makes it more onerous for any business owner to be able to do business, like all of a sudden, we put a percentage on King Supers and now they're figuring, trying to figure out what they gotta do with, I mean, they got one something that doesn't fit into that percentage, that puts them over the, you know, the, at that outside, that doesn't make sense.
Well, this actually is a Walmart, and it would fully comply, is what's.
It would.
So this is the back of the Walmart, everything's screened.
Is that the thirty-five percent?
So.
Is that an example of the thirty-five percent?
Um, no, this is more like ten.
Ten percent?
Thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five percent's a lot.
So you can imagine thirty-five percent is a huge amount of.
So again, it depends on the type of business.
And this doesn't address, so in France, they also have, um, outdoor displays, seasonal, sometimes they have events, so that's not including that at all. So it'd be thirty-five percent in addition to all the outdoor.
So, a lumberyard or caterpillar, or, put in a rental, are those considered commercial?
I'd be on those industrial.
Are that considered industrial or commercial?
Zone industrial.
And that's zone industrial with that type of business, okay, what about lumber storage? Is that industrial?
Universal Products is heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial.
So Scott, when you look at somewhere like a Lowe's or a Home Depot, where, you know, obviously they've got the stuff that is cleared out the parking lot, but then they've also got the kind of outdoor extension of the store portion, where it's fully enclosed, but maybe open or just kind of canopy. Does that get considered as outdoor storage, or does that get considered as part of like the general leasable area?
That is considered outdoor storage. And so that's kind of how, and why we drafted the code language the way we did, um, is even though they're fully screened, but even though you can still kind of see it in them, but it's outside, it's not covered by a roof, it's not fully covered, completely by the walls, it's screened. Um, so that would be considered outdoor storage, because that's more inventory than just sale items. I mean, yes, those items are for sale, but a lot of that is inventory.
Can I, can I take a step back, and this, this is for the benefit of some of the newer town board members too. But we get thrown into this, and there's no manual that says, hey, you gotta know what limited industrial and heavy industrial and general commercial. And we've got all these different zonings all over town, and for the benefit of the board, so that we make an informed decision on what we want Windsor to look like based upon what the code is, I think it'd be good to take a thirty thousand foot view and say, "This corridor here along Main Street that includes ACE or the, you know, whatever that it's zoned like this, so that we can look at what the definitions of those zoning are." So that then we can start saying, oh, well, if we've made that change here, that could put ACE in a problem or, you know, et cetera, and then we can, I don't know, I'm not trying to speak for everybody, but I think that for me, that would make, that would make me more educated on.
I think we need to look at some examples, so we know the consequences could be pro and con.
Based upon different zoning districts, exactly.
Well, I think, uh, we, we obviously don't wanna hurt their business or hurt their retail, but we certainly have, we went through the slides a few months ago where we saw, we use ACE as an example of the base, but it is all messy behind it, and it is residential. I don't know if we get complaints, but I do think we need to tighten that up, you know, if somebody doesn't take care of the lawn, you know, somebody calls it in, and, and we enforce it, I think we do need to do, we have some cases around town where some, the backs of businesses are just a mess.
And Barry, all I'm trying to say is, I, right off, I don't even know what ACE's zoning is and what the criteria are, so that we know, hey, that would make them in violation. Do you see what I mean?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just from a broad brush perspective, everything in Main Street west of downtown is zoned general commercial. Downtown itself is zoned central business, and then the eastern, as you leave downtown, becomes general commercial again. So general commercial is also, um, the underlying zoning out at I-25 and three ninety-two, and it's also the underlying zoning out at South Gate on Highway thirty-four. Essentially the, the gateways to Windsor, um, and so that's why we've always been fairly, um, conservative with regard to outdoor storage. Um, when the downturn hit and those general commercial lots, uh, the dealerships started being candidates for reuse, some of those uses probably pushed the envelope as far as actually being general commercial uses, but in order to work with property owners and try to, I guess, promote redevelopment of those lots after the car dealerships left, that's one of the things like Bobcat and some of these uses that maybe lean a little bit more, push the envelope of general commercial, I guess.
Scott, what about Arapahoe, Arapahoe rental, is that a GC or?
It's general commercial, and they have a conditional use grant for the outdoor storage, because they were a pre-existing use and they, they bought the lot that's adjacent to them to the east, and they started using it as outdoor storage without approvals. So it was a long drawn out process to go through a conditional use grant after the fact to help that business get into compliance, so.
They would, they would, now they'd be able to be in the general commercial.
Correct, it would norm, they would, well, depending on what this language, if it's adopted, allows, that could be considered display of equipment for rental and that kind of thing, but under today's code again, on the outdoor storage and it would, went through a conditional use grant as a, as a way to work with the business and not be too heavy-handed to say you can't have that use.
When you look into the surrounding communities, um, do they have the three-point rate like you had in the slide, or do they have a one percentage? Can you go next slide?
The three, the three categories were actually something that kind of came out of the last work session on June fourth. The idea was that some of those smaller uses don't have a need for that type of storage like the larger home improvements. So that's why Devon and staff went in that direction, but that isn't something that we took from another.
Well, and I think, I like the idea of it, being, I like what Shane suggests to maybe have a look at what a flat rate and get some models of that. I mean, I'm looking at this, if I had a business that's forty-nine thousand square feet, I could only have five thousand outdoor storage. You know, the, the categories here would be really difficult.
Which I think comes back to Ken, us have been a business friendly, where we don't wanna restrict somebody's growth on account of what they.
Right, so we need to look at some, you know, what flat rate would look like and some examples of that in different parts of town too.
It almost seems counterintuitive, if you look at that Walmart building, you could say you could only have ten percent outdoor storage, is it fine? That's, that's five acres, right? And if you got a small little retail shop and you say you can only have five percent, it's like, great, I could put trash cans outside.
It's almost like the percent ought to be bigger when the building is small. What percentage is about?
Maybe it makes sense to have some sort of different classification to apply, like if you had the Home Depot or Lowe's come, because those obviously do have those large outdoor indoor pseudo areas that would maybe necessitate the thirty-five percent. But if you were to have a Walmart or a Target that's that same footprint, you wouldn't wanna even consider letting them have thirty-five percent of the outdoor storage, because it's a difference in the products, and so I think the street.
Honestly, I think that, that where we should break is just how we define, you know, how are we gonna define merchandise for sale? And how are we gonna define what storage, you know, because really, to me, that's what, I think we're saying, well, we wanna be business friendly and we want to be able to have drills outside or whatever that is, that, that's a different conversation than all the pallets behind the building and how they look. So I, I think it's really just more of a, what's for sale versus what are we storing here? And really making that kind of the breaking point, because if you have like, you know, with the Home Depot, merchandise for sale, okay, well, that's for sale, that's fine. It's Benard's, it's for sale, versus everything that's in the back, you know?
So is, is equipment like, uh, Arapahoe rental, is the equipment considered to be storage?
We've called it equipment display, you know, and, and I believe that's what the conditional use grant called it.
So it would normally be under I, uh, light industrial, which would go to a different set of regulations. You say, certainly it's not allowed in general commercial.
Right, so the conditional use grant allowed them to have, uh, exterior display, and I think we used something similar with the Bobcat situation as well.
Cause it's, they're technically storing what's for purchase, so that's really like a showroom.
Right.
It's going back to.
Of their.
So it sounds like maybe, I think folks are in favor of your idea, Shane, about maybe them putting together some additional information for us to.
So we'll get what I heard, um, so, I'll bring back to a nice zoning overview, so the board has a good sense of, okay, here's the general commercial, here's our light industrial, and, and staff doing that, um, and maybe with that, a little, little overview of this, what's allowed in each zone. Um, I think we could have some, uh, site plans, some specific things, and I think we could run some numbers, you know, pick it fifteen, twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five percent. So the board can just see how that really looks, cause again, you know, when you say five percent or fifteen, it's, it's, it's not, uh, adriel. And then maybe we could also work on, um, some definitions, it sounds to me like we wanna make sure that things that are for sale and legitimately for sale, uh, wouldn't get caught.
For rent or for sale, you know, versus storage pipes and, right.
So Shane, are you suggesting you'll zoom in on a, or show the overhead of a commercial area and maybe highlight in yellow or red how big they're.
That, that's right, yeah, I think we could just pick like, a, a few sites, I think we could just pick a few notable businesses in Windsor and just, just run that, just run different percentages and just show you. I like when, um, you know, Carolyn said that was maybe ten percent of Highland Walmart, wow, that's, that's only ten percent, that seems like a lot. Or like David said, you know, it's on like such a huge site that, you know.
Can I request the Highlands industrial area up there as one of the?
Things we examine?
Things we examine, cause that's outlined, I mean, we got, we got Cat out there, you know, with different, various different businesses out there. They're not, they're not commercial.
But we've already got some slides to show those as a comparable, if you'd like to see that. Um, because when we went through the code update to put in fifty percent for limited industrial several years ago, we've got some slides with the actual area identified already, so even though they're, they're currently limited industrial, we can certainly throw those in as a comparison.
I just meant like the thirty thousand foot view with what businesses are zoned as what, because of what they do.
Yeah, those are all limited industrial out there.
I, I thought a couple of them had changed though, with like the concrete place, or a couple of them out there had, had maybe had a CUG or something like that, you know, in their development.
They're actually all limited industrial except for Cat and the storage facility on the other corner, those are both, those are both heavy industrial.
Okay, the, the U-Haul storage things.
And this would be retroactive, or is this just going forward? This would just be applied to new site plans, um, we'd have to essentially grandfather in anything that's not meeting these, but it's already been approved.
It looks to me like the existing, I had to chase the origins around just to make sure I understood, and it, it's not that it doesn't address it, it just goes to that accessory use and it limits it in general commercial, and it doesn't, you could argue you have a right to outdoor storage. But light industrial says that it's, uh, accessory outdoor storage is limited to sixty-five percent of the total square footage of the property, not of the GLA, and that's, that's a different, that's a much different measure, right? Again, if you start tying it to the GLA, if you have somebody who has a small retail box, they're dead, they can't put a trash can outside. So I think making it a percentage of the property makes more sense, and gosh, as long as it's screened and isn't disruptive and ugly, I mean, why do you care?
Do we, do we have a screening, uh, criteria that, uh, you know, I mean, screening, like what it's gonna look like, or if it's opaque, or transparent, or decorative? Light industrial.
General commercial doesn't address it, cause it didn't really anticipate.
Right.
We have.
But the language that Devon drafted doesn't.
Yeah, there's something in our patent that describes it.
And would we allow like, uh, just landscaping for screening? Would we allow?
No, no, it'd be like architectural fencing, so like, where do you see it next to Home Depot or something like that, where it matches the architecture of the building? But sometimes has like mesh screening in between.
But like stone, like the matches the outside of the building, et cetera, that's on the post and stuff like that?
David, I think you hit the nail on the head, I mean, your issues, it would look business friendly and, uh, uh, flexibility that allows the business to do what they need to do, but the real issue then is aesthetics and protecting property value, being a good neighbor, basically, right? So the screening is a big issue, but we have policy on that, is my understanding.
Well, the, the language that Devon was proposing has screening language in it, but when you talk about screening thirty-five percent of the site.
That's significant.
That's a pretty good combo.
It's significant, right? And location and zoning, that, that backs up to a neighborhood, that's different than considering commercial park.
Well, and this is what the board's got to decide, if we're talking about our commercial corridors and what do they look like? As to business friendly, you've screened it, you can't see really what's in there.
Why do we care?
Should we care, should we not care?
It's balancing the needs of the business.
That's right.
With the aesthetics of the neighborhood, and the accessible communities.
Right, right.
Does your board want Scott to address whether it upsets residential specifically, or?
I believe there's anything specific to residential.
Or if you need something more for that, could you want a different degree, different look of screening than you do when it's commercial?
Commercial versus, it's backed into a residential.
Okay, yeah, we're not gonna have much time on the parking, so I'm not sure where we're, I mean.
So with the parking, we can, um, just looking at upcoming meetings, we do have, uh, Kim doing the municipal court discussion with the board on August twenty-seventh. Um, but we've already booked up, um, the PDL update for Highway thirty-four, we've got, um, Devon's helped us book that up. Um, so that's, that is actually full, but, um, I will talk to Kim, she just wants to get this done this year. So I may see if she's able to getting, um, maybe punted, um, a couple weeks, and so we can bring this back. So I think that, um, outdoor parking and this discussion are really timely now, and everybody wants to talk about it, so we'll see if I can.
But I was, I guess I, just from a general perspective, I guess is there a consensus that we need to address the parking, or is that something that? Or is that something that?
Or you mean leave it as is with what's written in right now?
That's, I guess, rather than keep going back, I guess, we could kind of have an idea for if you really want to address parking differently or?
The multi, you're talking about the multifamily.
Yeah.
My only thought is, what you have now is, I think there needs to be a mechanism where what's, how's this gonna? Is this come as an ordinance then in place once it's done? Is, I think there needs to be because, something in place where there's something that we look into this every so many years. Because this is something I think that could change and, and be, and vary. And I'd hate to be stuck, stuck with something on the books forever. And then we find out, you know, then we have a problem and we haven't been on top of it.
Sure. No, there's definitely potential need to revisit it when autonomous vehicles are the, are out there, when ride sharing is the norm more than it is today. Um, you know, definitely that parking is gonna be something that we have to look at in the future. Um, which is looking at it from his current standpoint of how people are still driving their individual cars for. Anyway, it sounds like.
We do need to talk about, cause my understanding is what really came, had a few months ago was the difference between those areas that have all-street parking available and areas that do not have all-street parking. So I do think we need to look at it.
Okay. What about, um, Shane, you were talking about maybe trying to find time to revisit this on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
What if we put our meeting on the twenty-seventh again at five-thirty? So we could.
Certainly could.
I mean, if that, if that would align with everybody else's schedule, that is a night we've already kind of blocked out. What if we allocated that first half hour to come back? Um, do parking first and if we have time, maybe you could bring back what else you have found in this other real quick to show and see if.
Sure.
Um, but what about that? And then we could, then you don't have to try to change any of the other stuff on the, on the books necessarily.
Right, well, I, I love that suggestion about starting early. Uh, I think that's great, um, but I still may have to ask Kim to wait. So I have a feeling between, um, that I think the C dot P E L thing will be maybe thirty minutes. Uh, but that would give us an hour to get through this and the parking, pace of this last discussion. I think we'll probably need that full amount of time. Um, and again, Kim just wants to get something in front of the board by year's end. So, um, well, I think, you know, she's amiable to getting pushed around on the agenda a little bit, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, anything about future meetings then, other than what we discussed? Then are we planning, there is a fifth Monday in October, are we canceling that fifth Monday?
Well, right now, we have it slated for the budget talks. We've got every Monday in October going to budget. But I think discussing with Dean that we may be able to get through everybody's presentations before then. So that'd be my goal, would still be that if you cancel that meeting, that right now we have it jammed like we're gonna need, uh, just because of completed, if we haven't finished our budget discussion.
Cause it's not on the current calendar right here.
No, there is.
And the reason why I'm asking is last October, again, that was when I, I left town, so.
And I am gonna be off.
We're looking at leaving town.
So we are.
I, I wanted to make sure that you weren't going to skip it or if you, if you need to make use of it, then I just need to know.
All right, yeah, I'll talk to Trishelle about that. I thought it, it was down so good.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll put that on right now and I'm just gonna just show it as a possible budget meeting. But I'd like to get done before then, it'd be nice to knock it out before Mondays.
I am already telling you I'm not gonna be here for your meetings.
I already issued.
I already don't.
Well, if we do, we don't need a work session.